Third twenty twenty four meeting of the Hartford three one school district board of education. May have a rule call please.
Here.
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 Here, here. This is a meeting of the board of education in public for the purpose of conducting the district's business and it is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Any district resident of or parent of currently enrolled student wishing to speak should have filled out a card located on the signing table and given it to the board secretary. Do not leave there any public comments tonight.
Require public people.
Barb, would you lead us into the allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands. One nation under God, made this home with letters of thanks.
Alright, consider approval of the agenda. The agenda notes the board's mission of legal support our community through dedicated governance, leadership and stewardship so that our students succeed. It also states our values and expectations as a board in governing our meetings. The purpose of the agenda approval is twofold. The first reason is to verify that public notice has been given according to state statute nineteen point eight four. Mrs. Hoffman has the meeting been properly noticed. Thank you. The second reason for approval of the agenda is to consider tabling an item or to rearrange the order of the events. Was there any comments anyone had about rearranging or tabling anything? Okay, then I would like a motion.
My motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no citizens delegations. We're going to move on to the board president's report. So this is a new section that we added so that if there's items that I wanted to bring up or discuss, we could do so. I'm going to keep it short and sweet. The first thing I'll just mention, which I know we're going to talk about more later, is that we have two more sessions for our facilities, for the community to come get more information about our facility project. They are August eighth and August thirteenth at six P M. At Lincoln Elementary. And I'm just encouraging everyone to come. The second thing I just wanted to address is kind of what I touched on last month, which was our hiring situation. And I'm happy to report that and I didn't get to check in with Jamie before she left for the day, but we have filled nearly all the positions at Central. There are two positions that are still in the works that aren't on our agenda tonight, but we have really done a great job. And so kudos to the whole hiring team from me for doing that, but we're in good shape with my school goals. So that's it. District administrator's report.
Hey, thank you very much, Will. In terms of information for the board, the very first thing that's listed is the academic standards. Those are notices that must be approved on a regular basis each year annually in July. And so you will actually see that it's actually even one when we we get to that portion of the agenda. Those were updated, but very minimally, really only our dates have changed because the rest of our offerings have remained consistent. In terms of the second item, the student nondiscrimination class one notice, class one means that we need to publish that in the newspaper. Mrs. Hoffman and I have that ready to go. That is also something that occurs on a regular basis. However, this year it was updated based on the new Title Nine regulations. So it looks slightly different than it did in the past, but this would be an annual posting as well. In terms of the district updates, I wanted to share that as scary as it sounds, and I'm looking at my team out here. We have very little time left this summer, but we also have a lot of exciting things coming up. So we have picture days coming up. We have our new staff in service coming up. We have some training for literacy coming up, and we also have our welcome back in service, which is for all of our team members across the district. That will be on August nineteenth. It will be held at Central Middle School, and I would love it if you could be present to join us. And no pressure, Erin, but if you are present, I would love if you could do a welcome back to the staff as school board president. We will make sure that we notice that day, but please let me know if you're able to be in attendance so that way I can look for you.
It kind of said that.
The breakfast will likely be around seven thirty or seven forty-five and the morning will actually start at eight o'clock. And then after that, we do have our open houses this year. We're running them a little bit differently than we have in the past. So typically or traditionally, we've had three different nights, one for each of the buildings. This year we are going to run our middle school on its own night and then our elementary is concurrently. We have talked a lot about this and about the benefits as well as some possible things that may not be benefits. And we've tried to come for all of our team members who work in multiple buildings to make sure that we have coverage and that we provide information for families so that we they know who will be where and when. But we felt that if this is positive, that we will obviously reflect on it afterwards. And if it's positive, it may be repeated. If it is a terrible experience for people, then we obviously won't do it again. If it ends up somewhere in the middle, perhaps we do it again, but with some changes or modifications for the future. Particularly because we don't have our school photos this night, we felt like this was an opportunity for us to explore this as an option. And then again, we'll reflect and see if this is something that we repeat in twenty twenty five. So that is on August twenty first and August twenty second. In addition to just planning out where people who work in multiple buildings will be as an administrative team and for pupil services for facilities. We've also discussed making sure that we have coverage at both elementary buildings on that day so that we can talk to people about our facilities information or if they have questions about pupil services or instrument rental or anything of the like. So we'll make sure that we have people from district office on hand in both buildings as well. And then the first day of school, we have a soft start again, which I really appreciate. I think it's a nice way for students and staff to begin the year. We go with three days, the first week, then four days and five days versus going right out into four or five day weeks. So we start on the twenty sixth. It's a Tuesday. I'm sorry, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And then our staff has an in-service which we're really excited about with Ross Green coming in on the twenty ninth. But our families will have a nice long weekend around Labor Day. Our staff will still have a four day weekend around Labor Day, and then we'll come back on that Tuesday for a four day week, then a five day week. Following that, we have more opportunities for involvement. And on September sixteenth, eighteenth and nineteenth, we have our family nights, which again will be facilitated by our community coordinators. And they were scavenger hunt last year. That was very popular. And so I do believe that's the theme again this year. And we have had some good suggestions in terms of including maybe some facilities information and some parent sessions on behavior, et cetera, as part of those evenings. So we've got a lot of exciting things coming up. And again, if you're interested in being present, obviously a couple of you are parents in the district. But if anyone is interested in being there, just let me know because right now I will post for that August nineteenth day, but I don't intend to post for our open house nights or our family nights unless I hear that multiple of you are planning on coming. And then in terms of facilities, Mr. Majeris passed out the official referendum ballot. This is only a draft. Please know that. What we wanted to do today is just update you about the last couple of community sessions that we have. We have had low attendance, but that has also given us the opportunity to kind of discuss and fine tune some of our approaches as we move forward. And we also wanted to make sure that we share this with you so that way you can see what that draft language will look like. Because again, just a reminder, this will come back to you, the whole document, which is about twelve pages in August for you to approve. And if you will take action to approve of this in August, what that means is that you've given us consent for your blessing to then move forward for referendum in November. If you don't approve this, then the work that we've done would stop. Okay. We have, like I said, had a couple more sessions since the last board meeting. We have two more coming up as Miss Will referenced. But I I know that I gave Mr. Majeris some props at the last special board meeting, but I just wanted to share again that Maxwell's three days was actually a huge success, not only for facilities, but also for our pupil services team as well, where we were able to just talk to a lot of different people and get more information out there. So in a minute, I'll turn it over to Mr. Majeris. The last thing that I wanted to share is that Mr. Retschlag, Ms. Hoffman and I have been talking about the facilities website. So we will have that able to be up and running in the near future. And then our plan for all of these different school activities that you've heard me talk about is that we will have a handout with a Q R code so that way people can not only hear from us, but then they can go right to the website and get more information if they aren't able to attend one of our session. Did you want to say anything else about the? And I don't know.
No, I think, again, I think it's intentionally written in terms of its reference to what we plan to do, partly because we want to make sure that if there's anything that needs to get done, that we're able to do it under the scope of the question. So it's a very intentional process that we take with Quarles and Brady to come up with what this language is. There have been some suggestions perhaps in terms of documenting or referencing the three school buildings instead of saying things something like district wide. So we'll take that under advisement and talk to our legal representation there. And then as far as it talks about an addition, again, if you're, if you recall the plan, the addition that we're talking about is in the kitchen area of like in school. So there's again some commentary and some thought as to should we refer reference the kitchen addition at Lincoln Elementary School in in order to not confuse or create additional questions or comments as it relates to, is this, are we talking about classroom facilities? Are we talking about extracurricular facilities or what exactly are we talking about? I think it would certainly be more accurate and may or may not be better received if they know that we're talking about replacing and remodeling the kitchen area that again is essentially original to the school, so.
Yes. All us plus looking school only?
No, so that's again, your that what what that question is actually kind of what we're fearful of. So by saying district, what you know, we're going to do capital improvement projects district wide. I, the the question is, should should we refer to capital projects at Lincoln Central and Rosman so that people know that there's projects at work being done at all three buildings or not? So.
I think so.
Again.
Yes, that's what we talked about. The legal team has been finding a way to make it.
Yeah, you just you just you just captured that concern right there.
Correct. And that's part of what we discussed last night after our facility session. And it's also what Mr. Retschlag and Ms. Hoffman I discussed today. In development of an F A Q section, we want to make sure that people understand it's for each of the buildings, so everyone is winning. If this goes to referendum and two, we felt even more, more so it would be number one, would be, are we the same as Hartford Union High School? Because we felt like there's confusion around, are we one district, two districts, how are we the same or different? And so we felt like we really needed to spell that out. So when it comes to a question, should you say yes in August? That this is clear for people when they vote in November.
The titling of the question, so i- if you're thinking about the ballot in advance, again, that just like the ballot was President of the United States, County Executive, Washington County, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The districts will be referenced in their section of the ballot. So I I can't say for sure which unit is going to go first, but I would bet that it's going to be alphabetical. So I'm guessing Hartford Union High School will go first in terms of their thing. And then since our legal name is School District of Hartford Joint One, I'm guessing our our ballot question will be A in a separate area and B referenced like that. So people should be able to see that it deals with our district and not their district. And the fact that there's two districts, again, that would be a tip off, but again, we'll we'll work on educating the uninformed during the process between August and November.
How does that work on the ballot though? So let's say I live in Richfield. Obviously, I wouldn't vote for the joint one. Does it? I'm just trying to remember what a ballot looks like in the sense of like, does it say you don't have to vote? Or if you're in this district, then so you're saying it's going to be under.
It's not.
Oh, it's separate.
It's a two dollar district. We'll get another ballot based on.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
There's plenty of places online to see the ballot ahead of time. I always go to what's on my ballot.
I.
Very.
Very. Yeah. We might even be able to link to something or.
Well, definitely.
Yeah, links on these tickets be appreciate.
There are places where people can look at this eight point two million dollar figure and attach it to which building and what.
Yes, the website will have that because it will have a link to our presentation that we've been running for each of the facility sessions. And then we'll also have a section in looking at the old referendum website, which was very helpful because I thought it was very well done. Adam had information about why now, you know, what is this for and why now? How does this financially implicate, you know, what are the implications for the district? So we'll have a page about that as well.
If your question down is how specifically does the eight point two break down, I don't know that we're it's not necessarily going to be presented in that manner. Again, our total project of fifteen million dollars will be presented in our informational materials as what the costs are for building that's getting the work done. But those bonds don't necessarily, it doesn't get broken down. If if we were borrowing the entire amount, then obviously we would do that. But again, since our project total includes money that we're planning to spend that we've accumulated, it doesn't really break down like that. So the bonds don't, the bond figures or the bond spending is not going to be broken down like by school. The total spending is going to be broken down by school.
Well, our money is rolling on forty six after the cost of the project.
Essentially.
And then the last part of my update was about Act Ten. I included the article from W A S D. That was put out shortly before, well, it was put out shortly after the holiday, but the ruling came in on July third. That was from a Dane County Judge, Judge Frost, who found that there may have been some violations, some no rational basis for justification for the exclusion of some employees. What that really means is that there is nothing at this point. There's no conclusive information at this point. So I shared this with you so that way you know that as a school district, we are monitoring Act Ten. We're making sure that we're staying up to date, much like we monitored Act Twenty and provided updates as needed. So right now, the W A S D is monitoring the case and will provide updates to us as decisions are made. But there is no action for us to take as a school district. It's just simply notification of where things are at.
I believe the unconstitutional is part of it because police agencies were not included in it. Correct.
Okay, we're moving on to some discussion points of the administrative report.
Yep, so I'm here to talk about all three kind of departments that I supervise. The supervisors aren't here tonight. They'll start coming once we get to August, September, and we'll go through normal reports from them. What I can tell you is tech's been busy. They've been working on a bunch of projects since school has gotten out. They're making great progress there. CrowdStrike, I don't know if you were personally or your businesses were impacted, but our impact from CrowdStrike, I'd say is minimal compared to how many machines and users we have in the district. Steve and Ryan were working on those things that morning and took care of the things that need to get taken care of so that those machines are back online and items patched and things like that. So while it could have been significant, it wasn't very significant for us versus again, what you heard in the news about airports and banks and other different things. We one of the big projects we have scheduled for the summer is replacing wireless access points across the district. We're using our e-funds money, e-rate money for that. Because e-rate took a long time to, A, they had some information listed for us in error that was, didn't allow them to approve our e-rate funding as early as we probably hoped. They did get everything taken care of and our e-rate funding was approved. And the reason why that makes a difference is we kind of direct order and and money goes directly to the providers that we choose the equipment from. So we place the orders and actually half, about half of the orders come in. The items are here on premises and Ryan and Steve will start installing those after they do the things they need to do to attach them to our network and get them ready to go. So that's one big project that's still left, but we'll do as many of them as we can before school starts. And then if we aren't able to get all the wireless access points changed that we had planned to, we'll do them again during breaks and downtimes and other things like that. So that's going well. Lastly, in tech, with Lori Albert's departure, we posted and got a lot of interested applicants for a tech technician position. Mr. Ashlock, now he's back from vacation, has gone through them. We've identified some candidates. We'd like to talk further. And we would anticipate having somebody that we plan to hire before school starts, I would think, since it is a support level person, that's a position that Terry for buildings and grounds. Again, another busy department in the summer. Summer cleaning is going well. We cleaned most of Lincoln School and Rossman School because Central Middle School has summer school. It's a little bit more difficult to clean there and stay out of their way in terms of that program. But now it's they're done. The staff is over there and they're cleaning and getting things done at Central. The maintenance shed addition started shortly after July first. Materials were delivered. I can tell you that the rain hasn't necessarily helped and it did provide us a chance. We did see a potential issue, the ground. Again, we've talked about the groundwater there and kind of what situation is there? The soil conditions where that addition goes aren't ideal necessarily. So before they set footings, they had to dig some more of the soil out because just again, it wasn't going to provide great drainage. So they dug it down a little bit farther, put some large stone in, put some small stone in to give us a chance to have great drainage there instead of poor drainage. So that all got taken care of. Footings got poured, slab got poured. We actually have walls and trusses now, and in fact, I think the steel for the existing building, which that was part of the project is replacing the steel on the existing and having it go right into the addition part. That steel is all put on, so that is good. So that's really progressing well. The anticipated completion of that project was going to be early September all the way through when we shouldn't really have any issue with that. Again, after this structure is actually built, then we'll need to do final grading for grass and things like that with the asphalt driveway and stuff like that. So again, that's moving well. For food service with our new food service director hired last month, she works a two hundred ten day contract. So while we don't have tons of access to her in July, she has been in several days in July. She's been reviewing staff schedules, looking at our existing documentation, and she's spoken to all our vendors for food, bread, milk and produce. So that's good. Menu planning is preliminarily started, so she's working on that and we'll keep going on that for the next week or parts of two weeks. She's going through training plans for staff. And as of yesterday, we were notified by D P I. This is our lucky year that we are selected for a food service administrative review. It's been some time since we've had one. I think the last one was in January twenty nineteen, and those tend to occur every five years or so. Covid kind of threw their schedule off, so we were expecting that one was either going to be coming this year or next year. It's happening this year. They go through pre and reduced applications, the direct certification process, record keeping for production, inspection records and things like that, training. So Sarah was actually, her previous district just had a review this year, so she's nice and refreshed in terms of what that process takes and she'll get the lucky chance to do it for our district.
Good for us.
So again, good things happening in those areas. I don't have any staff that works in transportation other than through pupil services registration and things like that. But we had a planning meeting with Rightway a couple of weeks ago. Mr. Ashlock and I talked to them about again, getting data back and forth, setting bus stops, things like that. They checked the calendars and compared those to the other districts to make sure, you know, who's in school at what time again, we do pay for the transportation for the private schools. So they just want to make sure that they knew what their calendars were versus our calendars. And as late as this afternoon, Mr. Stevens, it looks like, has somewhat solidified the fall sports calendar and has communicated what dates he needs transportation for the cross country team. So they have that information as well. So that's going forward too. And lastly, in accounting and finance, we have our audit this week, which is always lovely. And so Esther's on site. They actually spoke to Mr. Banky today. They always talk to one board member about just general conditions in the school district, and he met with them this afternoon. And I doubt there's any follow up comments by them, but just so you're aware, he talked to them.
I have a question with the transportation. Do we have plans or will the bus routes be pretty much similar? And when do we know, like, when the police or the state, right, that comes in and decides how far the walking is? Like, has any of that, we expect any changes with who can be eligible to bus or not. I know it's a two mile, but.
The walking limits are set by the school board and we follow state statute, which lists two miles. So there will be no change in those boundaries. Washington County periodically at our request does a review of unusually hazardous transportation areas. They did that somewhat recently, so that we're not having them out. There hasn't been any significant additions to brand new subdivisions or anything like that. So there really isn't anything for them to review at this time. So those areas are designated and will either transport or not transport in those areas as we did last year. Bus route information won't be out till late because we want to make sure we have as many of the students accounted for as possible. So it's hard for them to set a route and provide times to people when we keep adding people. And that impacts again, anybody that would have to get placed in the middle of the route, pushes the whole rest of the route back in terms of times. So we really try to leave that until late so that again, there's not confusion and a whole bunch of changes. So there will be a cutoff time where we'll kind of say, this is it. And we have to route what we have and then provide that information and then we'll take care of kind of who gets added after that. Really comes into account in the rural areas versus the city areas. We have tended to use bus stops and I've encouraged Rightway to use more common bus stops. I don't think it's unreasonable that we have students walk to a designated bus stop versus trying to get away from picking too many kids up in front of their house. If the stop happens to be in front of your house, I guess you're one of the lucky ones. But again, we want those stops to be in common spots. We can accumulate as many kids, get them on the bus and get to school so that the routes are efficient. So we we have the authority designated our our administrative team and me specifically to set those stops with Rightway. And so that's what we do is try to set set them so we can gather up as many of the students as possible in the least amount of locations.
And that's based on the registration, which is going on now. And then so there's going to be a cutoff on the registration timeframe. Once we have whatever date that is. If you've registered that you may need busing, then we'll evaluate that, see if they're in their area and go.
Yeah, the reality is that we continue even after the skinneely cuts off the registration. Fact of the matter is we get lots of registrations in August. We have lots of students that tend to want to register as late as open houses and things like that. So again, there will be a cutoff time where we'll kind of route and then we'll just have to have people in as we get them. But yeah, I mean, that's that's the general process.
Thank you. Policy technical corrections and policy administration.
So last month I had spoken about.
So last month I had spoken about the Title Nine regulations and the different action items or courses. That would be presented to the school board this evening. So the very first items that I'll talk about are the policy technical corrections. So what this is, is the existing policy, policy twenty two sixty six. Still needs to remain intact for any future of um indications or statements. Of an action or a situation that occurred prior to August first of twenty twenty four. So the new policy that we'll talk about later is for anything that's both occurring after and is reported after August first. The current policy is for anything that has happened prior to August first, but it could be reported at any point in time. So that's the technical correction there and the only statement that was included was. To update to say that conduct alleged to have occurred prior to August first twenty twenty four. Which is the effective date of the twenty twenty four Title Nine regulations. Must be processed in accordance with the twenty twenty, which is the most previous Title Nine regulation. So that's the only change for this policy. And then when we look at the administrative guidelines. The first one is for twenty two sixty six, which has been updated to support the newly revised policy. And then the new um administrative guideline which supports the policy that I had. Um, asked for you to take action on later this evening. So that one is again, not a policy, it's a rule, like a guidebook of here's what you should do step by step to help you navigate. The Title Nine policy if you approve it later tonight.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to our action items. Action item number one, approval by the Board of the Annual Declaration and Parent Notice of the District Student Academic Standards. That will be in effect for the twenty twenty four twenty five school year, including the standards for the content areas that are expressly identified in section one two zero point one two. Thirteen and section one eighteen point thirty one G A one of the state statutes. The academic uh. Um, they are providers of parents and guardians of students in the notice of the student academic standards that are in effect for the twenty four twenty five school year. In the letter and they will also be placed on the district's website. Um, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed notice of the student academic standards that are in effect for the twenty four twenty five school year. And other required notices as said, proposed notice was presented as Ms. Loakes has read just now.
Second.
Any discussion or questions about that?
I would just add that um Ms. Multer reviewed everything prior to presenting it to you and again, it's very similar to what has been approved.
As the standards go. Are we. Fighting the standards that are on the giving.
We are still following the Wisconsin model academic standards. But we're hoping to get our results up there even more than last year.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, Advanced Learner Handbook twenty twenty four twenty five. This handbook serves as a comprehensive and inclusive guide to support the unique educational needs of all students. Is there a motion?
I'll make I'll make the motion to approve the twenty four twenty five Advanced Learner Handbook.
Second.
Well, any discussion or questions?
So I just want to start off by saying that. I had spoken to Miss Keneely and Ms. Multer earlier this year, asked them about our gifted intel to program. Um, they came back right away and said, um, to be more inclusive, we have the advanced learner. Uh, program that we're looking to enhance. And so they did a really nice job, not only of working with each other, but then also collaborating with the school psychologists. They also really thought deeply about the current leadership that we have in place in terms of teacher leadership. And how that supports or doesn't support as well as it could be supporting our advanced learners. So what I'm really excited about with this is that they thought through. Um, enough to know that there are students who are accelerated or advanced, but not necessarily qualified for giftedness. And yet we still need to be doing something for those students. And so the handbook that they're presenting to you today. Which if approved will become part of the regular annual approvals that we bring to for our handbooks. Um, allows a differentiated education planner, a D E P for students who are both referred and end up qualifying through the process that's laid out in that handbook.
Well done on the handbook that we've never had.
Yes, yeah, it's exciting. And I got my letter today for my son, thank you.
I have a question about the the teachers, uh. Do the teachers on staff hear teaching kids or do they ever go outside the school or? Is does somebody else come in or how does that work?
So yes, to answer your question, uh, teachers have that responsibility to differentiate to meet the needs of all their learners. But in addition to that, our current programming, we do have some opportunities that are beyond the walls of our district. Um, which include um accelerated students who might be advanced learners and actually take an accelerated math course at Herford High School.
Oh, okay.
It's pretty nice that they worked it out in the beginning, they start studying at the high school and then rejoin their fascinates back at the middle school and.
Same thing for elementary, yeah.
Yep.
Yep, some fifth grade students have that opportunity to take uh sixth grade math. So two key factors that we're both really enthusiastic about in developing this handbook is consistency and collaboration. So we're really excited about about what it what it brings us.
Any other discussion or questions about that? Is there a mo- uh, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Got confused there, okay. Motion carries. Number three, the Virtual Education Handbook for twenty four twenty five. This handbook is for students taking our virtual programming for all or part of the day. Expectations for students, families, and the school are outlined. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the twenty twenty four twenty five Virtual Education Handbook.
I'll second.
Thank you, Barb. Any questions or discussion on this?
So we've had a virtual program handbook in place previously. However, um, we did note some concerns uh just when going through that. Through different situations throughout the school year. And Miss Keneely was part of those conversations. The principal over at the middle school was involved in those conversations, as was Mr. Stevens, who. Um, often dealt with student needs and behaviors uh throughout the year. So Dr. Ragaska has updated this handbook in just a few places to help us address some of those needs that were uncovered this year.
This will also be in effect if we unfortunately do not get a Spanish. Teacher, then if it ends up going virtual, these will apply to obviously that that first full program for Spanish. Thank you.
As long as you brought up Spanish, um. Person. So Lisa.
I'll talk to other board, we need to get. Thank you so much.
There's no other discussion about the virtual handbook? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, waive the two reading requirement and policy zero one three one point one bylaws and policies. We are asking for the board to waive the two reading requirement based on the following language found within bylaw zero one three one point one. When compelling reasons exist for an immediate revision, the board may adopt any new bylaw or policy, provided the adoption does not conflict with the law. The requirements from the federal government provide compelling reason to waive the second reading. This waiver allows the board to take action on the new Title Nine policy, which is the next next action item. Is there a motion?
Make motion to approve waiving the. Motion to approve waiving the two reading requirement and policy zero one three one point one bylaws and policies.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just point out one third patient, this only applies to this next item we're voting on. It applies to nothing else in this meeting or any future meeting. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to action item number five, policy twenty two sixty four nondiscrimination on the basis of sex and education programs or activities. This is a new policy in order to provide structure and procedure for meeting requirements at this federal regulation. This policy covers all forms of sex discrimination. Policy twenty two sixty six will also remain in place for any complaints reports prior to August first twenty twenty four. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve policy twenty two sixty four nondiscrimination of the basis of sex and education programs or activities.
Second.
Do we have some questions or discussion?
So if I can just start off by saying what, so what's different in the new Title Nine regulations? Um, and I'll start off when Miss Neely has been involved um in all of the trainings with me so far, so if I miss anything, please feel free to interject. Um, what is different is that our twenty twenty regulations covered sex-based harassment. This covers all forms of sex discrimination, so that includes a whole array of things. And the whole array of things are really where some of the hangups have been in terms of the negative reaction that has been voiced throughout this process. If we've been following along with what's occurring in other states or either in other districts. Um, most recently, the District of Kansas um had issued a preliminary injunction. And so that caused some complications with the plaintiff organizations needing to file notice. If you followed the city high school board meeting yesterday. They were named um in that situation where we are not, we have not been contacted either formally or informally. Um, one of the things that we know in this is that a school district that adopts the policy as recommended. And we've been working with not only our attorneys through Neola. Um, but also we've been participating in the training through Renning Lewis and Lacy, which is another very esteemed um firm in the state. As well as listening to our W A S B information. If you adopt the policy today, we are not um violating any court orders, so it's important to know that. And then presently, the regulations that are adopted by the U S D O E or the United States Department of Education remain um the law in Wisconsin. So we are still governed, remember, said back at the June board meeting. That we are not one of the states that filed that petition initially, so we are still covered by those laws. Um, there are several updates for this policy. There are multiple definitions that were updated and I won't go through all of those. These are all things that are found in the Title Nine summary document that I shared with you. But there are updated definitions, there's also updated verbiage, um. Which is one of the nice things in terms of differences between the previous language to this language. Reports of sexual harassment was what was used through twenty twenty, now it's notifications and so that makes that easier for us to work through. Um, one of the the nice things uh that really slowed down the process in the past is that Miss Keneely was our coordinator. Mr. Bully was a second um or a secondary coordinator um for any type of um complaints for the district. Now specifically, we are allowed a primary and then we could have multiple secondaries if we choose, so we may actually in fact add additional people. But beyond that, Miss Keneely can now serve in the capacity of coordinator and decision maker, which really eliminates a lot of the time delays. So for example, what I mean by that is in the past, Miss Keneely would have to write her report. We'd have to have time for it to come to me as the decision maker. I would usually look at it. People involved, both the complainant as well as the um respondent, thank you. Would need time to weigh in with either questions, comments, or additional information and it would go back and forth. Now that Miss Keneely can serve in both of those competitive capacities, we really limited the amount of time that's needed. So it can be a much more expedited process, which actually is very helpful for families who are waiting to figure out. What is the outcome, what's going on? Um, so those are two really big things. And then the third thing, that's probably the largest update that provides a flexibility to us. Is that we can now implement an informal reservation process with the mutual agreement of the parties. Where without a formal complaint having to be written or drafted first. So that's really nice, um because we want to make sure that we're working as expediently as possible and not getting walked down in the minutia. Um, in terms of supportive measures, this is one of the things that I think they are being more stringent on, but what I will say and. Fortunately, not having a lot of experience with Title Nine, which is a good thing. Um, in working with Miss Keneely this year, she's done a superb job of making sure that we have supportive measures in place when we have had situations. Whether they're, you know, behavior-related, title-related, or other. She does a really good job making sure that she's listening to the students, listening to the families and putting things in place before we ever get to an ugly situation. So while that does make it more stringent for us, I think this is already an area of strength with Miss Keneely. And then uh the last thing that I wanted to share. Is that the policy does need to be in place prior to August first because the new law is in place on August first. However, um, some of the uh information that final re- um rule will not come out until November. And so we will continue to be monitoring cyberbullying, code of conduct, athletics, things like that. Just to make sure that we are prepared and we're being responsive to whatever those rules in November come out to be. The other thing is that through our involvement with both Neola, but even more so with Renning Lewis Lacy. We are already having access for our teachers for the new training that they will need. So that's something that we'll be involved in actively monitoring the day that um it comes out. But then we'll be able to use the recording with our staff so that way they receive the training. And training is required both for policy twenty two sixty six as well as policy twenty two sixty.
Any questions or discussion? Anyone? Seeing none then, um. Sorry, lost my place. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to number six, United Systems Associate HVAC Controls Contract for twenty four twenty five. This annual contract performs preventative maintenance, minor system changes, and monitoring of the HVAC systems at all of the district buildings. This includes alarm monitoring, phone and onsite support, and any software or firmware updates. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the twenty twenty four twenty five. United Systems Associates HVAC Controls Contract that costs up to exceed sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second.
Um, any discussion or questions about this?
This is standard um work that needs to be done. We're bringing it to you because it's above my threshold of working, so.
It is the same company that we've used. Mr. Banky has experience with that company. Mr. Carol has experience with that company. Um, they did the work as we needed to in terms of replacing the items that were damaged here. They do. Again, a bunch of work in this district. They're familiar with our systems. Um, while you might dispute the temperature range in this room tonight, um.
Always.
The. The systems um again are monitored by them and um they're very responsive in terms of if we have. Uh, problems or need, somebody would come on site to do some work that they come and get that done for us.
They've just set this room to be frigid at all times. Mr. Carol will talk after.
We have uh, they itemize their involvement, so if they come below that. Number we established here.
So we 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 do get information on their work orders and the time that they spend here and things like that, so. Again, they've been through the district um already this summer doing work and things like that, so again, it's it's. A, they kept their cost the same as they did um as it was last year, so I I do appreciate that from them. Um, again, because of their familiarity, I think they're able to get their work done efficiently because they know in most cases have installed those systems. But again, there is a lot of preventative maintenance that they come and do here versus just coming here when we have issues.
Okay, uh, with that, can I have a roll call vote please? Barb?
Aye, Karen.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
I say aye. Ed.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number seven, School Emergency Operations and Crisis Response Plan for twenty four twenty five. The comprehensive response plan includes updates of personnel and contact information. The edited draft will be shared with our chief McCarlin, or which not our chief, with chief McCarlin and chief Burgard. Is there a motion?
I make a move to approve the twenty four twenty five School Emergency Operations and Crisis Response Plan.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
So just being new to this district, um last year, I was able to see not only how our building leadership teams implemented this plan. Throughout all of the drills and professional development that they did, but also how Mr. Vajeras facilitated the safety meeting um during the year. With all of our safety officials to make sure that everyone was on the same page. I think this is a very successful plan that I hope we are. You know, practicing for and never have to actually use, but I'm very proud of the work that the team has put into making this a success. I just also wanted to note that if you notice any incorrect names or extensions or things like that. Um after you take action on this this evening, we will wait to make those updates on names or additions. Until we have um most of our staff being situated, so in case you see anything, um that's what we're waiting for.
We do submit this report to the Department of Administration Office of School Safety and um. And they have always given us positive feedback. They um never sent us any necessarily um process improvements. In fact, they would like to be able to share it with other districts, although um again, we've been somewhat hesitant because there is. Kind of information specific to us and things like that, so um but it's good to know that they think our product is a solid product.
I would agree. I think it is a very solid.
I would agree and um just the comment about the names and stuff, Tara and I talked about this, um the maps are a little long, but she's gonna. Work on fixing that. But you're just not the same and I think consistency, they should all look the same.
Yeah.
The maps were, the maps were produced during different projects that were done over the districts and things like that. Because we have funky research at doing potentially doing some work across the district if the referendum gets through and stuff like that. That'll be an opportunity for them to give us new layouts for all of those, so yes, we'll we'll get new layouts for those. The ones that exist for this building, for example, are just documents that we got from the health clinic, so. It's kind of hard with that.
Okay. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight is the adoption of model local educational agency special education policies and procedures. As a condition for funding under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, I D A, the district must. Establish written policies and procedures for implementing federal special education laws. Our district adopts the model policies and procedures for special education as recommended by the Department of Instruction. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the adoption of the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction Special Education Model Policies and Procedures.
Second.
Any discussion?
So uh Ms. Kenealy reached out to D P I because typically this handbook is updated every July. Um they were able to get back to her pretty quickly and notify her that they are not making any updates to this handbook. So this is simply a renewal of the handbook that's been in place. So this is something that comes to annually and the fact that we follow what D P I says we need to be doing in means we're in total compliance with what their expectations are.
Is there any chance you think that they'll update it anytime between the school year or no? They typically.
July, um when we do our budgetings or funding, we have to delegate like our adapting D P I's. Are we developing our own? So most of the budgeting is done in August and so they wouldn't do it in the middle of the year and throw everybody off.
Okay, yeah. Uh any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, um our item is the consent agenda. There is a whole lot of stuff in there. And do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Any discussion question? Oh yeah, sorry, Mr. Roll Call. Uh roll call vote please.
Ed.
Aye.
I say aye. Don.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Barb.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item is to move into closed session for Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five one C. For the purpose of approval of the last closed session minutes from May twenty-eighth and also district administrator evaluation. Can I have a motion?
Motion to move into closed session per Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eighty-five one C for the purpose of the approval of the May twenty eighth twenty-four closed session minutes. And the district administrator evaluation. Roll call.
I need a second.
Second.
And well, that was a tie. I'll give it to Doc. Can I roll call now?
Aaron.
Aye.
Barb.
Aye.
Ed.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
I say aye. Motion carries. And we're back. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most competing adjourned at eight forty-two.